We call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the June 13th, 2013 Upshur County Commission meeting.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, June 13, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, and Jacqueline Denglocke Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the regular meetings of June 6, 2013, as submitted. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of the request from the J.F. Allen Company to use off-duty sheriff deputies to provide protection for a road construction project during the months of July and August. Ms. Palmeroy advised that she has consulted with West Virginia County's risk pool. After discussion, Donnie Tenny requested Megan Palmeroy to follow up with J.F. Allen Company for clarification of details and place the item on the June 27 agenda for action. Megan Palmeroy provided a status report slash update on the hiring of housekeeping services for the E-911 Communications Center and the WVU Extension Office. Ms. Palmeroy advised that efforts to fill a part-time position in the maintenance housekeeping department have failed due to a lack of applicants. Ms. Palmeroy followed up with established janitorial services, as was discussed at a prior commission meeting. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the contract bid from the Quality Home and Office Cleaning at the quoted rates. Donnie Tenny reviewed the request for magistrate and assessor personnel for parking spaces to be provided by the Commission. After discussion, Mr. Tenny advised that the Commission will review options and follow up at a future meeting. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the resignation of Aleisha Carr as Upshur County Commission Administrative Assistant and requested Megan Palmeroy to follow up with advertising to fill the position. The Commissioners expressed that Ms. Carr has been a great asset to the county and will be missed. Donnie Tenny reviewed correspondence from County Resident Irvin B. Lake, in which he expressed interest in becoming a board member on the J.W. Currie Library and Park Advisory Board. Mr. Tenny requested Megan Palmeroy to follow up with current board members and place the item on a future agenda for action. Joyce Harris Thacker, Upshur County Family Resource Director, provided information and data concerning elder abuse and introduced Alan Cook, Upshur County Senior Center Representative. Mr. Cook read the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day proclamation, which encourages citizens to participate in community efforts to improve the safety and well-being of all people throughout our state and help prevent the abuse of seniors and disabled adults. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the proclamation. Micah Harris, Lewis Upshur Braxton Community Corrections Director, appeared before the Commission to discuss the location or relocation of the office. Donnie Tenny advised that the Commission is not interested in purchasing the building where the Upshur County Community Corrections Offices are currently located, due to the unhealthy slash unsafe condition of the building, and discussed options for a new location. Megan Palmeroy reviewed the request from the Brooks Hill Community Group for a donation to help fund the Brooks Hill Community Fair on July 26 and 27, 2013. Donnie Tenny advised that future donation requests for community centers and fairs should be reviewed and allocated during budget sessions to achieve a more equal distribution. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved a donation for the Brooks Hill Community Fair in the amount of $500, notation that Brady and Rafferty were for and Tenny was against. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Elizabeth Gifford Howell as volunteer for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. The Commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, grant award from the State of West Virginia Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety, sub-grant number 10SHS59, sub-grant period, June 1, 2013 through June 31, 2013, in the amount of $15,000. Number two, Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility CAT report for May 2013. Number three, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number four, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number five, meetings as listed. Number six, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. At 10:30 a.m. on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to review applications for the position of Assistant County Administrator. Present were Donnie Tenny, J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, and Megan Palmeroy. The Commission returned to open session at 11:00 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Michael Kaufman, Buchanan Rotary Club President, appeared before the Commission and presented a check in the amount of $1,500 for the Upshur County Youth Camp for the purchase of a picnic table, bench, and trash can. Mr. Tenny expressed the Commission's appreciation for the gift. Mr. Kaufman advised that the Rotary Club has also provided a gift in the amount of $1,500 to the Buchanan Library for the purchase of a 52-volume set of books on states. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission recessed at 11:45 a.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Policy Board at 1:00 p.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Department Supervisors at 2:00 p.m. The Commission reconvened at 4:05 p.m. And with no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission meeting adjourned at 4:05 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? If not, I'd ask for a motion to be approved as such.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, June 19.
Okay. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held a special meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Wednesday, June 19, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, and Jacqueline Denglocke Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of the request from J.F. Allen Company to use off-duty sheriff deputies to provide protection for a road construction project during the months of July and August. Ms. Palmeroy advised that she has consulted with the West Virginia County's risk pool and followed up with J.F. Allen Company. Ms. Palmeroy advised that J.F. Allen Company requires that payment of wages be made through direct payments to the deputies, which is contradictory to West Virginia Corp. advice that payments should be made through county bookkeeping in order to ensure employees are covered under workers' compensation. After follow-up, the contract terms proposed by J.F. Allen were not agreeable to the Commission due to the failure to adequately protect the deputies and the sheriff's interests. No action was taken. Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, advised of the resignation of Sharon O'Hern as Fire Fee Clerk effective July 12, 2013. And Ms. Adams requested the reassignment of Amy Atwell to the position of Fire Fee Clerk. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the lateral transfer of Amy Atwell effective July 13, 2013, at her current pay rate and advertisement for the position as tax deputy for the position left vacant by Amy Atwell. At 9:30 a.m., on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to conduct interviews for the position of Assistant County Administrator. Present were Donnie Tenny, J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, and Megan Palmeroy. The Commission returned to open session at 12:45 p.m. No decisions were made in executive session. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission meeting adjourned at 12:45 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as read? If not, I'd ask for a motion to be approved as such.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Our next scheduled appointment, thank you Jackie, next scheduled appointment is at 9:30, and we have about 15 minutes, so we do have some folks with us from the Sand Run Baptist Community Building. And we've had a request for some repairs, and Megan's done a little research. Let's let her tell us what she's found, and then we'll talk about your situation.
We've found some interesting things, and Scott Lance and I have been working for quite a while, trying to figure out who exactly owns this building. The only lease, or I'm sorry, the only actual deed I could find says that the Board of Education owns it. But I did find a number of letters in about, that were dated about 1981 and II, indicating that the County Commission had intended to take over three community buildings that had belonged to the Board of Education. I found a number of letters back and forth, then there was a letter in about 1983, I believe, which stated that our maintenance department is no longer going to care for those buildings because it was taking them away from their duties. So I found these letters, but I still haven't found a deed actually transferring the ownership of the property to the Commission. Mr. Lance brought in a lease agreement from 1991, and then there, I don't know who found the 1992 lease agreement, but that also states, both of these lease agreements are between the County Commission and Sand Run Baptist Church for the building. So it looks like, I don't know what happened with the deed, but it looks like it has been treated as County Commission property. So what led to all of this is that there are some leaks in the roof and windows, I believe, is that correct?
The windows need to repair and the roof's leaking.
Okay. So in the 1992 lease, which is, I think, the most recent one we could find, is that correct? Have you found anything more recent than that? Okay. In that, it says that the leasee, which is the Sand Run Baptist Church, let's see, agrees to keep the premises in good and tenable repair, reasonable wear and tear, they will not allow waste of the premises. So it does say that they're supposed to maintain any sort of reasonable wear and tear, you know, I don't know how you consider windows being replaced or roof leaks in the roof, right?
We can't find where the leak is.
Okay, but there is something.
It's hidden behind the fence.
Okay. So, and I was not aware that they wanted to be placed on the agenda today, so can't make any decisions, but I want to make you aware, and I just got this just now, this lease, so I can talk to our maintenance department, see if they're able to go out and at least take a look at it, see if they can find the leak, or if you prefer, I can put it on the agenda for next week.
Or the next week, rather.
Or, I'm sorry, yes, we don't have any next week.
Does that have a metal rough on it?
What was that?
Does it have a metal rough on it? Metal rough, is it?
Yes.
Regular metal roughing?
Yeah.
Something I mentioned to Megan, we can have Greg go out and take a look at it and see if you figure out where that particular leak is, and then maybe an option there would be to get an estimate on a new rough or new windows, and then we could help with the process of applying with Delegate Hamilton to get a community partnership grant to replace those windows, and maybe if the roof needs to be replaced. He and Senator Barnes have been pretty successful, and they just got, what was it, $10,000 for the A.D.
Disabled, yeah.
So that's something I suggested, that we could get Greg Harris to go out and take a look at it, and maybe he could get contact with you when he's got a minute to go out there and take a look and see, and then look at the possibility of putting together a grant for the Community Partnership Grant Program if it needs a new rough. And you say it definitely needs new windows?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, maybe if it's not much to get the leak fixed now, get that taken care of, help you out with that. Because we do use that for polling place, right?
Right.
Okay, so.
Mr. President, if I may, County Commissioners, the president has been settling the repair and says in their normal wear and tear, which they have to do. However, there have been problems there before, and each and every County Commission employee has taken care of it in the past. However, they have been out there a couple times within the last couple of years, I believe, at least once, and they couldn't find any that were complete.
Right.
So the leak is there, and it is a polling place, and it's to the lease. I had a conversation with Mr. Parker, Father Sheriff, about much the same. I discovered that it did say it was a one-year lease, and he sort of put it off and said, we know everything's fine, we don't have to have it formalized. But I knew right there that was wrong, it should have been formality, and that date should have been extended. We didn't want to be bothered with it every year, it's a five or 10-year lease where the piece might be, with the option for either party to pick out, give it a proper notice. But it never was addressed, to my knowledge. So this 92 that she's talking about, I believe is the last lease.
And it does say it continues on a month-to-month tenancy basis, so that one year does.
That month-to-month.
Yeah, so, or two.
And there was really defined what reasonable usage or repair would be.
Right.
Major repair, I think a roof, I think that's a little bit different, and as you make note to, it is a kind of polling place.
Right. And I think the last time, Sherman, there was a problem with the furnace or the heater, and we went out there and put a thermocouple, I believe, on it.
Yeah, or something.
Something, it was something that got fixed, anyway. But why don't we, if that's okay with you guys, we can't make a decision, but I had mentioned that to Megan, if she talked to Greg and had him to go out and take a look at that, then he can give us a report back on that as to what his recommendation is. A temporary fix, and then we could talk to Delegate Hamilton and see if maybe we could get some money from Charleston. The best thing to do would be just to put a new rough on it and put the windows in it, and then you're done with it. That'd be the ideal situation.
Greg could do that for informative purposes.
Right, right, right. Just for information.
Has an addendum to that when he comes out, if you were contacting your staff.
Right.
We can meet in there and show them which specifically where the problem is.
We had a recent situation similar to that at the public library in Tenerton, where you had a leak and you couldn't quite trace it, but they crewed it on it, and it took a while, but they were able to locate it.
I imagine we should wish Harold Ford right now because of the terrain we had this morning.
Right, with all the terrain.
That's when it tends to, should leak.
Yeah. Well, we'll have him to gather some information and get back with us, so then we can do what's right. How's that? Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you. We still have six minutes, so we have approved County Financial Institution depositories as required West Virginia Code 761, Freedom Bank, First Community Bank, J.P. Morgan Chase, Premier and Progressive Bank.
And this is just every year we have to indicate what banks we use to deposit public money into, so.
Right.
And I talked with our bookkeeper, and these are, I believe, these are all the banks that we use.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion and to approve these?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, discussion and appointment of board members to Quarter H Authority. So according to this, they changed the bylaws that the Development Authority Director or someone in a similar position is an automatic member to this Quarter H Authority, and then the County Commission has, each County Commission of Lewis Upshur Barber Randolph Tucker Grant and Hardy shall point three, one of being the Development Authority Director. But then down here it says, for Upshur County, Robert Skinner and Steve Foster are the two appointments who are ending this year.
I spoke with Bob Skinner, and he is desirous of continuing in that appointment.
Okay. And we just have to write a letter, and I have a little form here to fill out as to who your appointees are. So Steve Foster is already on there as Development Authority Director, and we just have to appoint two more. So either reappoint Bob Skinner or someone else, or I think, and also J.C., we appointed him at the beginning.
Well, originally, yeah, originally we had put Mr. Platcher on there, and then as we reassigned appointments, I thought, of course, is this a four-year term now, is that what I understand?
Well, it was four years, a year ago, when Creed vacated it, and I was appointed.
I do think it would be nice, and we could check, of course, I don't know if the deadline, is this the deadline for all the appointments? I don't know why, and originally we didn't put someone from Region 7 on, because they're the ones that are very instrumental in getting grant funding, but anyway, what we need to do is to then have two names to submit. We don't need to submit Steve's name?
No.
Okay, so that's a given, since he's the Development Authority Director, so.
And we did get another, a letter of interest from another community member, which I think you can.
Right, we have a letter from Mr. Edwards asking for consideration on that, so. But now, J.C., have you been, have they had a meeting since?
Yes, I've been to several.
Okay. How often do they have a meeting?
Independent, but usually quarterly, a minimum of quarterly.
Okay. Okay, well.
Next one, of course, is set for July 15.
Okay. Are you desirous to stay on that?
I've been active, and Steve Foster, the Upshur Development Authority meeting the other day, requested that I be selected.
All right, do we have a motion then for appointments to that?
What's that, Leonard?
Robert Skinner and J.C. Rafferty.
Yes.
Is that your motion? Okay, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, appointments of board members to Upshur County Development Authority. Upshur County Development Authority met on Wednesday, June 26, and agreed the following individuals should be submitted to Upshur County Commission for appointment to Upshur County Development Authority for terms effective July 1/13 to June 30/16. Bryson Van Ostrand, Jay Martin, Curtis Wilkinson, Tom Shaw, Barry Pitts, and Laura Metis. Any comments? Who's on the Development Authority? Are you on that, J.C.?
Yes.
Any comments on that recommendation?
Those individuals were contacted by a committee representing the Development Authority, and all have agreed to serve various terms within the Board.
Okay.
And it was a recommendation of the Development Authority Board that they be approved by the Commission.
Do we have a motion to have effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Resignation of Roy Moss, Buchanan Upshur Airport Authority member, effective June 19, 2013, and appointment of Derek Long to Upshur County Airport Authority Board.
These are letters that I actually received from the Airport Authority itself, so they both turned in the letters to the Airport Authority, and as far as I'm aware, the Airport Authority's reviewed this and approves of the appointment of Mr. Derek Long.
Okay, any questions or comments on that recommendations? If not, I'd ask for a motion that we approve both.
So moved.
All second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Approval fiscal year 1314 wage and salary schedule for employees under the direction and control of the Upshur County Commission. Megan?
This, again, is something that we do each year at the start of a new fiscal year, just to solidify the pay raises that you approved during the budget hearings. So these are all of the employees that are under the direction control of Upshur County Commission. There are also some employees that are basically passed through for other organizations like the EMS Child Visitation Center. And I have attempted to contact all those outside agencies. I have not heard back from some of them to determine whether they gave their employees different raises, no raises. So there may be some little tweaks there for those outside agencies, but for the most part, it's accurate. And there is also Michael Miller, who is our animal control officer. When he was hired, he had not yet gone through certification, I think it's C-A-E-R-T, and he has since completed that, and during hiring, I believe he was going to get a 50-cent raise once he got that certification. So he has done that, we don't have the actual paper yet, so his will probably also change from what's on here.
Now, the pass-through agencies are ones that we do the payroll for, the agencies?
Correct, and then we get reimbursed from them.
Do they understand if they don't get us those figures, that we can't adjust their payroll accordingly?
I believe so. I left them messages to keep me in call.
Okay, okay.
I heard from some of them, and I have not heard from all of them yet, but.
Okay.
And then the differences in percentage, you approved either 2% rates or a minimum of $600, I believe it was, so.
Okay, any questions on that? You see it before you? If not, then I would ask for a motion that we approve the schedule.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. All right, approval of lease, Community Corrections Building relocation effective July 2013. Okay, any comments on this, Megan? Is this their move to a new facility, which is?
Yes, yeah, they were given an eviction notice, and so they had to find a new location. This is actually a building that's owned by one of our sheriff deputies, and so he has agreed to lease it to them. I think it's, I believe it's at the same amount that they pay right now. I think it's located over by Southern States area.
Yes.
And Micah reviewed the contract yesterday and then gave it to me, and I think that she is satisfied with that, and we have, we do have a copy with Jason Queen's signature on it, and then, so we just need your signature and a Donnie for approval.
Okay. All right, any questions on the lease or on the move? I think it'll be a good move for them, and if not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the lease and authorize the President sign the document.
So moved.
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Approval of Section 125 Flexible Benefit Plan Adoption Agreement American Fidelity Assurance Company effective July 1 through June 13 through June 30 of '14.
And this is a plan that basically allows us to offer health benefits, FSAs, all of that. You have to have this plan in place in order to offer that, it has to be signed by July 1, and it goes for a year. And there may be some changes that come through as a result of the Affordability Care Act or Obamacare, and we'll update those when those happen. So we may have a new one to sign in January or.
Will a representative be coming to schedule meetings with people that are going to take advantage of this?
They actually did that in May.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right.
So it's once a year every May.
I remember that, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this agreement and authorize the President sign the documents?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have, we want to wait for someone else, Amanda, Crystal, or hopefully she'll be here in a little bit. Well, we'll go.
Out of town.
Oh, she's out of town?
I thought her other picture was going to be you, and it's not.
We could wait, we could go through everything else and wait just a little bit if you want. We've got a few more things. The Upshur County Sheriff's Financial Statement, period ending May 13. Any surprises, Megan?
Not that one.
Okay, any questions on that, gentlemen, comments?
I understand that from discussions with the sheriff, part of that is going to be used to upgrade their tax computer system, make it more efficient and user-friendly for the employees on there. That's going to be about a 20, $15,000 to $20,000 investment by the sheriff. He'd be someone you'd want to speak with regarding the specifics on that, but that, he indicated to me was his intention to use part of that funding for that purpose.
Part of which funding?
Part of the concealed weapons.
Oh, concealed weapons?
Mm-hmm. To purchase that computer program, computers, equipment.
Okay, Upshur County Deputy Sheriff's Association Notification of Change in Upshur County Civil Service Commission Board.
That's just for your awareness, one individual, I believe he cannot serve anymore for some reason, Richard Kitts-Miller, so he resigned, and then they approved Louis Anderson to take over his place on the Board.
Okay, for your information. NACO Prescription Drug Discount Card Program, May Report.
Unfortunately, that dropped a little bit, but...
Huh?
It dropped a little bit, unfortunately, but we're making the effort to get more information out, make people aware. I attended an FRN meeting to hand out the prescription drug cards, so hopefully, that'll start to raise up. Those numbers will start to go up soon.
It's a free program, people that are eligible should take advantage of.
And the, there are really no eligibility requirements, except that you don't have drug prescription coverage.
You'd be breathing.
So even if you have other health benefits, you...
It might be better than what you have under your insurance, so you just basically have to be breathing.
Yep. You don't have to sign up or anything.
NACO is also looking at a discount dental and visual, visual card, which hopefully, they'll come out with pretty soon, which will, which will help people also, so... This is another advantage of being a member of NACO. All right, so we ready, Amanda? You think we're ready? Okay, we have Amanda Hayes and her folks, and Relay for Life Month proclamation, so it's all yours, Amanda.
I'm Amanda Hayes, I'm the publicity chair for Upstate County Relay for Life, and we also have Mike Alkhayer, who is our community manager with American Cancer Society, and Linda Wolfe, who is on the committee and holds several positions. And the American Cancer Society is celebrating 100 years this year. In Upstate County, we're celebrating our 16th Annual Upstate County Relay for Life, and it'll be held July 26, Friday, beginning around 6 o'clock, and it'll go into Saturday morning, the 27th. Our team's fundraised all year long, and we normally raise well over $100,000, and all of this money goes to the American Cancer Society to find a cure for cancer and pay for programs to help cancer patients. So I would like to read the proclamation, and we're asking the Commission to designate July 2013 as Relay for Life Month. Whereas the people of Upstate County have been affected by cancer, and the mortality rate from cancer in Upstate County is higher than national averages, and whereas the American Cancer Society is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year, and Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society, and whereas Relay for Life of Upstate County is not just a fundraiser, is a unique activity that offers an opportunity to participate in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors, and remembers those lost to the disease, to build a network of businesses and health organizations to address community cancer issues, and to recruit new volunteers to deliver American Cancer Society programs and services. And whereas Relay for Life of Upstate County has had a significant presence in our community for the last 15 years, has touched thousands of our residents, and has raised over $1.5 million to help fight the battle against cancer, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Upstate County, to hereby proclaim the month of July in the year 2013 as Relay for Life Month, and urge individuals, families, businesses, schools, service organizations, churches, and neighbors to unite in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors, and to remember those we have lost to cancer.
Do we have a motion to approve the proclamations, Red?
So moved.
Do we have two seconds?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Do you want to, are you going to take a picture yourself, Amanda?
It just proves nothing up here.
Oh, we have a volunteer in the background. All right, everybody come up here that's, wants to get in the picture and...
I'll hide in the back, I'm slumming right now.
Is it raining again?
It's raining outside.
Again.
You got upstaged by the old fella.
Come on, Amanda, get up here. Be on the other end of the camera for once.
Yeah, on the front side.
Is your focus going to be on that?
It's true.
Yeah, all right. I'm sure I got it down here. Thank you all.
Thank you, now.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, thank you.
Tell your dad those strawberries are excellent.
Oh, really? Big project strawberries.
Yeah, we got some from them. They were excellent. Sweet, they were sweet, very sweet. Yeah. Have a good one now, good luck.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have about five minutes, Rich, before you can speak.
It's all right.
You just sit there and rest a little bit. Yes. Records Management and Preservation Board Grant Agreement, a $12,000 grant, period July 1/13 to June 14.
That is a grant that the Circuit Clerk has applied for and received for recording, transferring a lot of their records into CDs and putting it on digital, well, CDs, and they're also purchasing a shredder.
Okay. Next item is correspondence from DEP, Reappointment of Randy Huffman, Upstate County Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors, effective July 1/13 through June 30/17. That's an appointment by the DEP. Okay, that's our, we've got our monthly calls and summary reports and... Do you have anything else, Megan? Gentlemen, if you attended any meetings you'd like to report on, any activities?
humorous, but nothing of any...
Substance?
Substance, or not, well, there's substance, but not of any noteworthyness.
Didn't mean to put that word in your mouth, I'm sorry.
Routine, routine decisions and whatnot. We have many people, I think, in Upstate County who participate in community service by participating or by being members of Boards and advisory committees and whatnot, and I think those, they're to be commended for that, because it does take time, it does take effort on their part to get involved. In today's world, it's easy to just kind of sit back and let the world go by, but I think we should recognize those people when we can, are willing to communicate and be involved in community, and to volunteer for those activities.
Takes a lot of volunteers to make everything happen, so... Well, Rich, we've got about three minutes, so let's take a three-minute break. What do you say, guys?
I concur.
Man, you can't get up there to we...
They do things differently in the city, yes.
Okay, we have Rich Clemmons with us, Buckhannon Airport Authority, Request for Assistance with Grant Application Draws. Go right ahead, Rich.
Thank you for allowing me to address you this morning, a nice day out there.
Beautiful day.
Good day for a meeting. We have a couple of items, I understand you've already dealt with one. We had a gentleman, Roy Moss, who's been a member of the Commission for some time, and he found his schedule just too busy to continue, and we appreciate all he's done, but we recommended, and I understand you already approved Derek Long to be a Board Member. He's been attending recently, and this will give him a chance to help us out a little bit more, so we appreciate that. Our primary concern today is the fact that in this split off of the airport from direct accounting and so on, from the county, which had done a lot of our accounting for us and our FAA reimbursement requests and so on, in the past, we're now trying to learn that process. FAA has a pretty involved system, it's all online, you can't do it on paper anymore, to request reimbursements for various activities. And one of those, actually, we're due for some reimbursements, and we're ready to apply for some additional charges from the consulting group that's doing our master plan, and it's nearing completion, so we want to make sure they're content and paid and so on. And with that, we request not only your authorization of those requests when they come through, and I think Megan has copies of those, but also for some assistance from Terry Joe, who's been very helpful in the past and understands, at least has some experience with the FAA's electronic systems. And we're not approved yet to go on and enter all this information ourselves, so we would request some assistance from Terry Joe to assist the filing of these FAA reimbursement requests and other issues that the Airport Authority has. So that's, that's basically my request. If that's okay, we'll proceed in that direction.
What's the, what's involved in you all becoming qualified or certified?
We have to go through a training session, and I understand it's reasonably complex, the process itself, so with Terry Joe's assistance, I think we can, we can come online. I mean, this is a limited-time event, but we need some help in the near term to get these reimbursements in and wrapped up and so on.
Is the certification something you do online, or do you have to attend a class somewhere?
Well, you have to attend a class online, but you also, it's not an overnight process, as you can probably expect with the FAA, so we're in the process of working on that.
Okay, so what, how much time you envision it taking to...
We don't know. We have little experience in this, but I'm guessing a few hours. Does that sound like reasonable number?
Well, I mean, when I did the drawdowns before, it was through a completely different system. It was through an ecosystem that, I don't really look at acronyms, standstill, that's what they called it, and that was a pretty seamless process, I mean, it wasn't anything too detrimental. They recently went in August of last year to a new system called the Delphi System, of which, like Rich said, I am certified, I guess, or have the username and password to do it, but we have never done an actual request through that system yet. So to answer, I really have no idea. Now, I pulled my file, and I actually was certified on June 8 of last year, got the certificate, but I haven't been on the system since then. So for me, even though I might have a username and password, I'm still going to have to go through that training again, just to refresh myself, because I certainly don't remember, you know, all of the different things and the functionalities of the system or anything like that. So I mean, I think initially, it's going to take me a little bit of time to get more familiar with the system as well, and then working, I guess, with the airport or who, you know, whomever the representative is of actually doing that draw, because I've not done one either. So I, to answer that, I really do not. I have no idea how long this will take. And I think, you know, the intent, I think, is that they're going to eventually get someone else certified. So I think it's definitely on a limited, you know, I don't know how long or how often I'll be actually doing a draw for them, but I mean, what would happen before is I was just given the numbers, I would sign one under my name, and I'd make a request, and it would come to the county. I mean, that's pretty much my limit to it. This, like Rich said, is much more complex, and there's a lot more to it, so other than being able to actually go on the computer and make that request drawdown, I don't know that I'm going to be able to assist them with much more than that as far, because Willie did everything, you know? He's the one who put all those numbers together. To get certified, you do have to take a training online, and then they do a background check, you know? So my username and passwords, they had to do a background check on me and, you know, make sure that I guess I'm legit, have a username and password. I mean, it's not a lengthy process, I think it took us about a month to actually do the whole process to get certified.
Well, do you all have someone in mind that you're going to train to do this?
It's probably going to be Phil or myself, unless Derek wants to take that task on, because we don't, unfortunately, we don't have Bud Wellings anymore.
Yeah.
And Bud did an awful lot of this kind of detailed work, and the rest of us are all volunteers, so it's trying to figure out who's, you know, and we may train more than one person, so we have a backup in the process, but probably Phil off, just myself, maybe Derek. Everybody's trying to kind of divide up the pie at this point.
So, so will part of what Terry Joe be doing, would that be part of your all's training process?
Yes, well, we'll at least be sitting in and trying to figure it out together, yeah.
Trying to understand the process.
Right. And a good portion of this money is repayment for items that you folks have already paid for.
Right.
And some of which are items which have not yet been paid, so it's, you know, it's a drawdown that's going to help both of us in the long term.
Yeah, I think the money actually comes in the name of the Airport and the Attorney Department.
Right.
Okay, any, any questions or...
How will this impact your other responsibilities with mapping and addressing? Obviously, it'll be an additional burden to you. I use the burden in a neutral sense, not a negative sense.
I'll fit it in somehow. I mean, I usually try and seem to be able to do that, so...
Well, thank you very much.
I mean, I'll get the help, whatever I can do to help them. I mean, I think they realize I would need to basically be retrained on it as well, too, so I'm not ready to go in there and make a request today, but, you know, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. I asked this morning if they were ready, and I think that they are ready to make a request, so knowing that, you know, I'll go in and refresh myself with the system, and hopefully, within the next week or two, at the latest, we can try to sit down together and actually do a draw.
And once you're again certified in the new system, or once you become adaptive to the new system, and they have someone on the Board who's adaptive to the new system, you probably will always be in a position where if they're in a pinch, if your, if your schedule permits or whatever, you can kind of fill in once in a while if, if they need so. Obviously, the intent is to have, the intent is to have your Board take that responsibility.
Right.
Okay, do we have a motion in that we request, grant the Request for Assistance with the Grant Application Draws?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, and...
And thank you, Terry Joe. Appreciate it.
Let me remind you that we do meet on second Friday of every month at 7:00 a.m. right here. You're welcome to stop by.
We're certainly glad to allow you the use of this facility for your good meeting.
We appreciate that. Sometimes it's very secure, we have trouble getting in at that time.
We try to run a very secure facility.
Well, that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Give her best to the end of the lock.
Oh, we will.
Okay, next item is discussion, approval for hire of Assistant County Administrator, and we need a motion for entering the executive station per West Virginia Code 69A-4.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Ready, Rick? Okay, we're exiting executive station and entering regular station. There were no decisions made in executive station, and the purpose of that was discussion, approval for hire of Assistant County Administrator, and we have a, if you would like to give the details of the name, and then we'll, we'll ask for a motion and vote.
Okay, we had four very qualified applicants, but I think Jennifer Dinkello?
Dinkello.
Dinkello?
Dinkello.
Is the most qualified and would probably fit in the best here, so...
Okay, and we will be offering 38.5, and with a six-month review, and if all works out well, then bump it to 40. So that's the details, and I'd ask for a motion that we approve the hiring of Jennifer.
With a start date of July 8.
July 8.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
We have second. I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. And that, other than paperwork, Rick, do you have something?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Richard, I would ask that maybe Megan or yourselves give an update to the citizens about the swimming pool and the situation there right now. As some of you may be aware, and I know I've got quite a few emails, that the pump is down, and I'm not aware of when it might be coming up.
Yeah.
But for those parents that may be anticipating so, I wouldn't think, at least until the end of the week, possibly the weekend.
Right, the pool manager and I were in contact on Sunday, which is when the pump actually went down, and that is the pump that actually filters water, which is very important for a recreational pool, so it broke, it's about a $2,500 piece of equipment that we had to repair, so, you know, that's not the kind of equipment that we have sitting around for $2,500, so we had to order that. It should be coming in today, we were hopeful that it would come in this morning, so that they could install it today. I have not yet gotten any updates as to whether that's happened, otherwise, it'll get in this afternoon, and we're working, trying to work very quickly to get that repaired, but we can only work as fast as we have the equipment. So we'll repair it as quickly as possible, and then, once it's actually repaired, there are also some other, not valves, but some other equipment that needed to be replaced in addition to the actual pump, just to ensure that no water gets flushed into that and then ruins that right away. So we did get, had to need to get a few... So, we did get, had to need to get a few other smaller items. So, if those are all, and apparently, it was very difficult to find some of those, so we're hoping that everything is going to work out, we'll get it installed, and then we have to wait for the pool to actually filter through again, because at this point, the water has not been filtered fully since Sunday. So, once it's installed, we have to wait until the water gets back to an appropriate level, and then we'll reopen the pool. So, as of right now, I don't really have any updates, except that we're working very quickly or trying to. Hopefully, we'll have some updates soon. I know, Rick, you are updating the Facebook page regularly.
Right, that's what I was going to mention next, for those citizens that might be watching or for the press, there is a Facebook page, the Upstate County Swimming Pool, that we've been updating almost daily on this situation, and also on other events that we do have going on at the pool, perhaps like the UK that we've already had. I would also like to mention, though, for the citizens and you guys, that, and if you're not aware of it, that we did arrange with Country Roads Transit to go ahead and have daily now this year, as opposed to last year, which was three times a week, three times a day. Country Roads Transit has offered up now daily trips twice a day, one starting at twelve at Stalker, and it's all the same stops, except for we've added Valley Green this year. So, all those kids go out, they get delivered at about twelve-thirty when the pool opens, and then at three-thirty is the delivery home on the reverse route. I would also like to mention that there's an opportunity for lunch now. We also have Mountain Cap doing the lunch program again. So, having said that, you can see how vital that this pool and facility is, but we've got to remember that this pool is old. It's not going to continue to be able to go like it has been. I want to urge not only commission, but the city of Buchanan and surrounding counties to come together and determine a way that we can build a new aquatics facility for our kids. It's important, I think, as the summer goes on, you'll remember that. The problem's going to be if that pool closes down.
I think your thoughts on the maintenance issues of the pool are well-taken, Rick, because the pool has outlived its normal life capacity, I believe, by about five years now.
Yes.
And as maintenance issues come up, it's going to be more and more of a concern and relative to the maintenance of the pool.
The modernity, JC, is an issue too. I mean, how much energy and water are we wasting now out of that pool? We're looking at a seventies-era pool. They didn't consider it back then. If you take a look at not only the heating, because we heat that pool, but the water that's going through, we had those leaks, how much water was wasted, how much energy's being wasted out of that pool?
Though, I believe the leak's been fixed.
Lakes are fixed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's no energy wasted because the heater's down.
But let's think about, but let's think about the money that you spent to fix that repair. You could almost have already built a third of another pool with just repairs from the leak that we had before. So, I would urge again, and maybe we need to come up with a committee, I do know that we need some volunteers on that Upstate County Recreational Park Board to come together, and we are looking for two openings now. I would urge any citizens to come in, because it's a very beneficial program, and let's all work together to look at a new facility, something perhaps like what Lewis County has. Maybe not as elaborate, maybe it's just a swimming pool, but it's time to think about it before we don't have a swimming pool. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, is there anything else before the cameras go off?